Morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us today at our regular county council meeting, June twenty six, two thousand and twenty five. I would like to call this meeting to order at nine thirty. We will start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge Athabasca County is located on First Nations Treaty Six and Treaty Eight traditional territory. We respect and honor all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples' connection to these lands, their history, language, and culture. We do have Council Wallach on Zoom today, and we will look for the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Okay. We will now go around council to decide which, oh, sorry.
Sorry, six point one for deletion.
I'm sorry?
Six point one for deletion.
Okay, we will split the question on this one. All right. I think we will go ahead with that motion now before we go ahead with the rest of the approval of the agenda. Council Minz would like to, well, the motion on the table is Council Hall would like to delete six point one. So if we can go around for the vote on that one, all those in favor of deleting six point one?
Aye.
Three, four, and those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you. It's five and four. We will now go through and decide which items the council would like to decide upon, the ones that to discuss. The ones that I have marked down are two point one, three point one, five point one, five point two, five point three, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, nine point two, eleven point one AI, and all of our in closed session items thirteen point one through thirteen point five. Are there any others? Okay. Are there any others that council would like to add to the agenda to discuss? Okay.
Oh.
Oh, go ahead.
Eleven point one W.
Eleven point one W. Wow, again. And go ahead, Council Anderson.
Item six point one, please.
Six point one. Alrighty. Anybody else? Last call. All right, I'll run through those again. Council will be discussing two point one, three point one, five point one, five point two, five point three, six point one, seven point one, seven point two, eight point one, eight point two, eight point three, nine point two, eleven point one W, eleven point one AI, thirteen point one through thirteen point five. Go ahead.
Six point three.
Six point three. Okay. So that's the last addition, six point three, I think. Does everybody have that one? Alrighty, is there a motion to accept the agenda? Council Chamzik? Would like to accept the agenda as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and no opposed? One opposed, two opposed, seven and two. Thank you. And we have three point one, which is our public hearing that we will go into now. So good morning, everyone. Um, we have, yeah, attendance. Okay, great. Good morning. Thank you. Alrighty. We have a few coming in on Zoom. Do we, should I wait for a few more? Okay. All right, good morning, everyone, and thank you for attending the public hearing for bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five. I'm Tracy Holland Reeve for Athabasca County, and I will be the chair of the hearing. This hearing is being held to discuss the updates to and revision of the Animal Control Bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five, formerly known as the Dog Control Bylaw. On behalf of council, I would like to welcome you here today. Before we begin, I would like to take a moment for introductions, beginning with council on my right.
Rob Minz, Division Eight, Baptiste Lake, Animal Lake area.
Good morning, Natasha Kapitanik, Division Two, Collington, Minook, and New Pine Creek.
Good morning, Joe Gerlock, Division One, Rochester, Perry, Galera.
Good morning, Gary Cromwell, Division Six, the far north up to and including wandering river and area.
Kelly Chamzik, Division Seven, Grassland, Crossfida, Atmore areas.
Brian Hall, I live in Division Four.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, which is the Boyle-Caslin area.
And go ahead, Ms. Wallach. Ms. Wallach.
Good morning, Camilla Walk, Division Nine, North of the River.
Thank you, and I introduced myself here earlier. We also have with us here today, Jordan Schenkelberg, he is our communications coordinator, Ms. Leah Blair, who's our recording secretary, Mr. C. Obeck, who will be the secretary of the hearing. We have, my goodness, we have Krista Director Wilkinson, Communication, I can never get this right, Community and Enforcement Services, close enough, and we have Chief Shalapai with us here as well for our regional fire chief. The secretary of the public hearing is Bob Beck, who is the CAO for Athabasca County. Any persons who have joined the meeting in person or via Zoom and wish to be heard should please give your full name now.
I don't know if I'll have anything to say. I'll see what happens here and then, uh, yeah. Go from there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the gallery who would like to speak? Sorry, did I miss someone? Okay, we need to have your names, please. Can I get you to spell that, please? I didn't catch it.
N-A-Z-A-R-K.
Okay, I've got you here, Harley Nasrick. Thank you. And anyone else?
Duncan, Karen Turner.
Here we go. Thank you, Duncan and Karen Turner. Thank you. And I believe it was Richard Nolan who is on Zoom. Okay, thank you. Alrighty, is that everybody? Okay, thank you. The public hearing for bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five is now open. I will now turn the floor over to Secretary Bob Beck.
The purpose of this public hearing is for Athabasca Council, the county, to hear testimony from interested parties. It is not meant to be a debate between presenters, and all comments must be directed to council through the chairperson. Only one person may speak at a time, and each person wishing to provide input to council will have the opportunity to do so. The ground rules of the hearing and the order of speaking will be, Director of Community and Protective Services Krista Wilkinson will speak first to outline the background and provide an explanation of the bylaw. Members of the public who are wishing to be heard will be given the opportunity to speak. Director Wilkinson will be given the opportunity to present closing remarks or address any of the issues presented. Counselors will be given the opportunity to ask questions. Council will then end the public hearing and will later consider the information received at the public hearing. Council will only receive, uh, consider matters raised at the hearing. Only counselors may ask questions of speakers during the hearing. If any persons want to ask questions of a speaker, they must ask the chair to ask the question on their behalf during their presentation, and the chair will only ask the question if the chair wishes to have an answer in order to undertake its consideration.
Thank you so much, CAO Beck. Before hearing from the public, I would ask Director Wilkinson to provide background and explanation of the proposed bylaw.
Thank you. Good morning. Work has been ongoing on the updates and revision of the Animal Control Bylaw, formerly known as the Dog Control Bylaw, since it was first presented to council in January of twenty four. Aligning closer with the current best practices and legislation, the revised bylaw addresses several existing gaps in the current bylaw uh, with the intent of promoting responsible pet ownership. Not having suitable access to animal boarding facilities, Athabasca County faces significant challenges in managing animal control issues and requires a robust suite of tools to ensure that all residents are able to enjoy the region without the negative impacts of improper pet ownership. Administration has taken much time to compare with our neighbors, listen to feedback from residents, uh, take into consideration the feedback from the online survey, and also engage with legal representation on this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Does council have any questions or points of clarification they wish to ask the director? Alrighty. Director Wilkinson, are there any written materials that have been submitted?
Yes, I have one letter here from a resident that they wish to be read into the record.
Thank you.
Uh, dear County of Athabasca bylaw officials, I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed Dog Control Bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five, intended to replace bylaw zero zero four, two thousand and sixteen. This proposal does not address the real issue of dogs running at large or livestock injury and death. Instead, it penalizes responsible dog owners, particularly those of us living on agricultural zoned land who support rescue and foster efforts in our community. Unfortunately, I unfortunately cannot make a Zoom meeting at nine thirty AM as most of our working community cannot. With a public town meeting in, at nine thirty, I feel it'll be difficult for folks to share their opinions due to work schedules and other commitments, so I wanted to email my feelings. I hope this will be directed. We move to the county specifically to contribute to the dog community and to avoid interference from municipal bylaws. This new bylaw is a significant government overreach. With shelters at capacity and many turning animals away, what exactly do you expect citizens to do if they already over, are over the proposed dog limit? Many of us, farmers, acreage owners, and small homesteaders have stepped up to take in strays or rehome dogs from families who can no longer care for them. This bylaw discourages that kind of support and could very well worsen the issue of dogs at large. The requirement for overlimit permits for an average rural dog owner is clearly a money grab. This is not a town property where density is a concern. There is no logical or ethical reason to impose dog limits on agricultural land. If the county's goal is truly to deal with irresponsible ownership, then enforce the rules for those who actually let their dogs roam, not those quietly doing their part to help. Have stronger and higher fines for off-leash dogs, severe fines for death to livestock, et cetera. This bylaw has misguided and alienates the very people working to solve the problem. I urge you to reconsider this overreaching legislation. I also think it's incredibly, incredibly important you train your bylaw officer, officers with the utmost care for community and up-to-date knowledge on the bylaws they enforce. There's a particular bylaw officer already telling acreage owners they are over the dog limit that is yet to be accepted and approved. This is a concern. It almost seems as if you do not truly want public opinions and have informed the bylaw officers that is already in fact law. That is beyond unfair to taxpaying members of our community who are in fact not currently breaking any laws. The overreach is absolutely disheartening. I strongly believe this will create a divide between the dog community and the county, and you will have lots of frustrated and resentful farm owners. As a dog owner, rescue dog owner, and foster dog owner who does not ask for any money from the government to support our dogs, we highly disagree with this new bylaw. We also believe you will displace a lot of dogs in the county and create much, much bigger issue in time. Sincerely, the Smith family, Athabasca County, agricultural zoned homeowners.
Thank you very much. There are no further, okay, thank you so much. Before I call upon those wishing to speak, there are a few housekeeping items. When you're ready to speak, we would ask that you come to the, the chair and the microphone. Direct your presentation to the chair and limit your presentation to five minutes in duration. When you're ready to speak, uh, please turn on the microphone by pressing the, uh, large button on the bottom center of the device. A red light on the microphone will appear, and you will know that it is signaled that it is on. Those who would like to make a presentation in support of bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five will go first. Those who would like to make a presentation in opposition of the bylaw will go second. Before those wishing to speak begin, please state your name for the record. So I will now call on the first speaker who is in support of bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five. Alrighty. So I will now call on the first speaker who is in opposition of bylaw zero one zero, two thousand and twenty five. And I believe I have on my, uh, sign-in sheet Duncan and Karen Turner? Did I get that right? Please go ahead. Perfect.
Yeah, I would like to comment. I agree with that lady that you um, wrote her proposal. By having us at nine thirty on a working day, you shut off a lot of people just the way you are, and for ourselves, we have working dogs and uh, guarding our dogs on our farm. At one time, we had ten. They're not pets. They are working dogs, and a working dog only has a short lifespan. You, like a teenager, you gotta train it. So you got trainees, you've got working dogs, and you've got retirees. Our retirees are put in a pen. They don't have, they're looked after, but they don't, can't get out, et cetera, et cetera. So we're over. Our limits are over all the time, what you want. And where is this heading and why are you pushing it? And, um, I don't understand. I guess I'd like to, from you people to, to talk, why are you pushing this?
Are you asking council this question?
Yeah, I just like to get input. Instead of reading something, I like to input from the council, why are you pushing this?
Okay, so this isn't meant to be a debate?
No, I understand that, but I just want verbal input. Why are you pushing this? I'm not debating anything.
Okay, we will be discussing this, uh, further on in our, uh, meeting, so, um, I don't believe, uh, unless council has a question um, of our presenter that we can go into, uh, answering questions at this time, but correct me if I'm wrong. Are we able to answer questions at this time, or do we wait until it's further into our agenda when the talk?
It's at the will of the chair. It's, um, the way public hearings are set up, I'll read it again, is not meant to be a debate between presenters and.
So I think we can have that conversation when we get further into our, uh, agenda package, when the, um, bylaw comes up on our agenda item. Thank you. Uh, before you go, does anybody have any questions of our presenter? Go ahead, Council Anderson, if you'd like to come back, please.
Thank you. Through the chair too, Mr. Turner. How would you define working dogs in a copy of the bylaw if we were to exclude them? How would you define it? And what do you feel is a fair definition or classification for that?
A working dog is looking after livestock. We have a lot of coyotes where we are. We have a ravine and a flat lake right there. We have wolves, we have cougars, we have coyotes coming through. A working dog is out there with the animals, guarding them, going after coyotes, going after predators. That's a guarding dog. A working dog is like a border collie, which we have, and they're out there herding, um, gathering, uh, animals in when we move them. It's a great help, absolutely great help. Um, I don't know else to define it. Uh, they're not there on your doorstep. If they're, if they're on our doorstep, we deal with it. You know, we put them back into the working environment. They're not in our, you know what I mean? They're not a lapdog. And like I said, when their, when their life has ended, or their working life has ended, we retire them. And they cannot get out, they cannot bother their neighbors, et cetera. We look after them. We appreciate their service, what they've done to us. So we look after them. And they have a hard life. They're out there in the elements all the time.
That's right. Okay, thank you so very much. Does anybody else have any questions of our presenter? Thank you so much. I believe we have, uh, second, um, person who would like to speak, Harley Nasrick? Please, thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Harley Nasrick. I live in the county of Athabasca, and I would just like to speak to this bylaw. First off, by saying I agree with a lot of the sentiments in that written letter. I am a very active in the fostering and rescue community. I typically got into it because the county, town, and most of our rescues around here don't intake dogs at the moment. There's such a, a need that everywhere is over capacity. So I take in strays at my own time, my own dollar. I have for years. I've become quite well-known in this community for it. People know that if they can't come to the county or scars, they can come to the detachment, and there's a sucker there that will take the dog. That's something I've been doing for quite a while. This concerns me because this could directly impact how I give back to the community with dogs, um, helping rescue, take them off the street. I train them. I have invested money with animals in train wrecks before rehoming them. I always make sure that they're neutered at my own cost and dollar. I don't charge anybody. That is how I try to give back to the world. This bylaw concerns me because it could directly affect my ability to do that. I don't know what you guys have in place for, um, if you guys cut off people like me who just want to help animals because we like to, uh, with scars being so full, with people not necessarily being able to go to the county or town, with just the lack of resources already out there, what would be, what would be expected, or, um, what would happen to these animals if people like us are no longer able to step up? I also am a little bit concerned about the bylaw officers being able to go on my property at any point in time, as I do expect a reasonable amount of privacy. I feel like that is a little bit of an overstep as well.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Before you go, is there anybody who has any questions for our presenter? Okay, thank you very much for speaking today. Um, I believe is, I do have a list, um, John Michaelman, uh, would you like to speak today?
Hi, just, stay forward.
Okay.
So my name is John Meshelman. I'm with Harley. So we, uh, exactly the same thing. I love animals, whether it's cats, dogs, doesn't matter what it is. And I'm a firm believer in helping any animals in need. Um, so this bylaw that's being proposed, I'm totally against it as well, especially with uh, your bylaw officer being able to come onto your property at any given time to check it out. I don't believe in that. There, everyone is, we have our right to privacy. So for the bylaw officer to be able to come onto your property and do inspections, whatever, I don't, I don't feel that's necessary unless we're given time heads up. Um, but yeah, the same thing with, uh, the letter that was, that was written, that, that's spot on. Gentleman that spoke, uh, behind me as well, like with agriculture people, they shouldn't have a limit. If they need so many amount of dogs to be guardians or a working dog, that shouldn't, shouldn't be a question. If they need that, then I think that's, that's needed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Does council have a, any questions for, go ahead, please?
Thank you for coming in, talking to us. Uh, when you read the bylaw, did you, uh, how do you feel the, the overlimit permits? How do you feel the process for permitting overlimits does not address your concerns?
Well, I think there, there definitely should be, you have responsible, responsible owners, just like in the letter, you have responsible owners and you have non-responsible owners. I totally believe that if you're a non-responsible owner and you can't keep your animals in a designated area, then they should be penalized. There should be some that, that happens to them, but for people that we rescue, help rescue, rehome, we train out of our own dollars, we don't ask for help. Um, gentleman behind me that has livestock dogs to work guard, same with ours, we are, we have guard dogs to help deter, um, wildlife away, wolves, coyotes, bears, stuff like that. Um, but I don't think there should be, uh, it should be penalized accordingly, I guess is what I should say.
Thank you.
If that answers your question.
So the, do you feel the overlimit processing? How could we improve the, the language around the overlimit permitting to address your concerns?
I guess if there shouldn't be, well, a farmer or an agriculture person that has that needs help, I don't think there should be a limit on that. If they need five or ten dogs and they're being responsible, they're being contained in an area where they need to be, I don't think there should be a, a limit. You have a person that has a puppy mill, for example, where their dogs are being released. You know, they, they can't contain them, then penalize them for sure. Does that answer that?
Okay, I believe so. That answers your question, Council Hall. Okay. Um, does anyone else have any other questions for our presenter?
Thank you.
Um, if you would like to come forward, please, I'm sorry, um, to the microphone, we have, uh, folks on Zoom who need to hear that.
Yeah, no worries. I just, uh, the question about the overlimit fee was really good, and I thought I'd speak to that if possible. The overlimit fee, I believe, would be good for certain scenarios. For example, like John said, if people that can't have proven they can't contain their animals have become a nuisance in the community. People that have proven that they can contain their animals, for example, I spend vast amounts of money on training kennels, babysitters when needed for them, people that are demonstrating responsible ownership, that is taking funds away from their ability to maintain their responsible pet ownership.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can, can you just follow up and where is the, identify the fee?
Sorry?
You, you said, you talked about an overlimit fee.
Yes, that's what I have been told, that there would be a fee imposed. Uh, let me see. Oh, I don't actually see it in here, but with the, having spoken to different places, I have been told that there would be a fee. If that's incorrect, that is good news.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Um, I don't believe there was any other questions. Okay. Our last item, our last person that I have on the list is Richard Nolan on Zoom. Would you like to speak?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, thanks for having me. I didn't really prepare anything. I didn't think I was gonna talk, so I'll just kind of go off the, off the heart. So I'm Richard Nolan. My wife works at Second Chance Animal Rescue Society, and I'm one of the very few volunteers out there. And I don't know how many people are really aware of the unique situation they're in, and really all of Alberta's in the overpopulation of homeless animals. There's no option. It's getting worse. Things aren't getting under control. Um, and by you closing the doors on, on the number of animals you're allowed to have, you're literally sentencing these animals to their deaths or long-term basically imprisonment, staying in shelters, pounds that are just, it's just cruel what you're, what you're considering doing. Um, we need more people to step in and start adopting and fostering dogs. Not less. I can understand the issue in town, a lot of noise problems, animals getting loose. There should absolutely be harsh penalties for irresponsible owners. But in the country, if I have eighty acres to myself, my dogs stay on my property, what is it anyone's business? Um, there's no reason to put a cap on this. I'll say it again, you're sentencing dogs to their death and basically the tort. I'll say it again, you're sentencing dogs to their death and basically the tortures they live in in their confined tiny spaces. So I'm very against this. I'm also not supportive of bylaw on to my property to investigate. So I hope you have a warrant for that. What my question would also be, what if you do stumble upon an acreage or a house that is above your numbers? What are you going to do about the dogs that are over your limit? You're going to put them down, take them away? What's your plan there? So a statement and a question.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's not meant to be a debate and I'm sure we can have this opportunity to have this discussion further with these questions that are coming forward. At this time, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Nolan? Okay. I believe, thank you, thank you so much for for speaking. I think we'll just go forward here a little bit. And I'll just ask, is there anyone else from the public that has not spoken and wishes to speak? Alrighty, does the director wish to make any closing comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, does counsel have any additional questions of any speaker or of the staff? Okay, I actually I do have a question with regards to, and this will be directed to Director Wilson, with regards to the over limit process. If I understand it correctly, it doesn't include working dogs?
Madam Chair, so the over limit it. There's a specific group of working working dogs, the guide dogs, police dog, service dogs that it does exempt. I took some really good notes during Mr. Turner's presentation here because one thing we have not found is a good definition of of working dog. And that was the challenge is how do we apply that? Because what's a working dog to one resident may be a different definition to somebody else. And there is no common legal definition. So we don't have an exemption for agricultural working dogs.
Okay, so that's something we can look at. Okay. And the over limit process as well, is that complaint based or is how is that activated?
Madam Chair, so the intent was the much like a burn barrel permit. Residents that do have more than the requisite number of dogs would apply for the over limit permit. They'd be issued the permit and it only becomes an issue should we have two bona fide complaints within a calendar year where we would look at that limit. So it becomes an enforcement tool where we do have folks that have more than the prescribed number of animals and substantiated complaints.
Okay, thank you. And with regards to bylaw entering property, are you able to speak to that as well?
Madam Chair, so 7.4 does allow for folks that are holding or holders of the permit enforcement animal control to enter and do an inspection. That's consistent with most of our permitting processes, development permits, kennel licenses and and such. That is definitely something we can discuss further if we desire.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that. Does anyone else have any questions for? Chief Shell, go ahead, Counselor Cromwell.
Thank you. Let me flip back to my page here. So and I I realize you used the word bona fide a few times in your discussion and I appreciate that. But 3.5, page number 47 of your agenda. An animal control officer, having received any complaint or conducting follow up to a previous complaint, may enter onto a property excluding a private dwelling for the purpose of inspecting, for compliance with this bylaw or for the purpose of seizing or impounding an animal. Now, I realize that you did use the word and I'll mention that again bona fide. However, to me, and and maybe this is my way of looking at it, we're I'm unhappy with that wording. I think that we can create a tool where Counselor Gerlock doesn't like Counselor Cromwell and he doesn't like Counselor Cromwell's dog. And he's going to put in multiple complaints and and this landowner, this rate payer is going to get visit after visit after visit of our CPO or multiple CPOs up until such time that these complaints are one. Hey, we we're not going to entertain this anymore. But we're we're making an issue here because one, we can use this as a weapon between rate payers, between different parties. And two, you know, should there ever actually be an issue? Well, now we've had 15 complaints that are non valid 15 times where we've taken away that civil liberty and encroached onto their property. I think we need to to work on that section a bit better. Because it it does frighten me a little bit. And I think there's is a difference between you know, a fire permit and a dog permit. And I think that's discussion for later on in our meeting. I just, I made that note before our our guests here were speaking that I I do have some issue with that myself.
So, okay, so you didn't actually have a question more of a comment?
I'll use my question, we get into robust discussion later.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions of staff? Sure. Please go, please come, please come to the mic though, please.
Ashton, sorry, Ashton asked me what a working dog. How do you find a dog that's retired, a working dog that's retired, kept in a pen, but it's no longer working? Just just a thought.
Absolutely, yeah. Something for us to consider for sure. Thank you. And we have Richard Nolan, who will also like to add a comment or a question? I believe you're still on mute. One moment, please. I think we might having a few technical difficulties. Oh, there you are.
You can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
So one question was, like I mentioned before about how scars is overwhelmed overflowed. They don't have room for any more dogs. So people like me, we foster dogs. They're not permanent. They're just with us until they get rehomed. Does this count towards the number? Because the intention isn't that they're permanent dogs. It's a temporary space until someone adopts, which frankly, adoptions are very slow.
Okay, thank you. I think that's a question that we'll have to take into consideration. I don't remember seeing the wording for foster dogs and and temporary, but if you.
Madam Chair, I'll just read section 626. The owner has written, so this would speak to not withstanding the premises shall not be subject to limits noted in section 6.1. 6.2.6, the owner has written approval from the county and is in a documented partnership with an animal rescue, animal shelter or licensed veterinarian clinic for the purposes of temporary fostering an animal. So written documentation is this confirmation from the shelter, the foster. So Scar sends the county an email. There's our written documentation that you're in a partnership and now we don't require over limit permits for that fostering.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. We are kind of going a little bit outside of how the public hearing rolls, but go ahead, please. Harley, if you'd like to come forward.
If you could please add to your mic. Thank you. I would just like to expand on Richard's question. I have been associated with different rescues before, previously barks. Quite often I take in animals that just come off the street. Like I said, people will bring them to the detachment and no one will take them. I'll take them home. I'm not necessarily a registered foster, anything like that. So I'm wondering how that would apply to people like me and others like me. For example, it is June, end of June, I have taken in nine dogs so far and found placements for them luckily. But that's nine dogs that we would be looking at euthanization or housing somewhere on people's tax dollars. I'm just wondering for people like me, how would we go about continuing to do our part? Would I have to then engage with a rescue? Or can I just do it out of the goodness of my heart without the expectation of being penalized for it?
Right. And I think that's something that, again, we'll have that conversation. Thank you. Alrighty, I believe, I think we've heard from all of our presenters and speakers today. But I will ask, does anyone feel that they have not been fairly heard? Okay, great, thank you. There being no further testimony, I will close the public hearing. I further advise counsel cannot receive any further information on this matter. Thank you for attending the public hearing. I declare the public hearing closed at 10:09. Thank you for taking the time to join us this morning. I was going to say we would resume our regular county council meeting, but I believe we're going to recess our council, our meeting unless, hang on, we have a delegation this morning do it. Pardon me, we'll check it. 10 a.m. And we also have MPC that we need to carry on forward. How should we proceed CAO? What would be the best? I'm assuming our delegations are here.
Yes, Madam Chair. Were there any members of the public waiting for the MPC meeting to get going again?
We, I don't know if he's still here. He's not rejoining.
So maybe it's not time sensitive to perhaps counsel could reconvene MPC later. We have a number of confirmed delegations that are that are supposed to be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So yes, we'll then carry forward then with our regular county council meeting. And thank you all for joining us. If we could take a recess for just two or three minutes until everybody has had an opportunity. Actually, we'll make it five.